...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Laura, you can call your role, and Lisa is Air Center. Don Studdman.
Yes.
Melanie Armia. Sergeant.
Labmanet.
Here.
Deputy Terry.
Here.
And there is one correction on the minutes. She found my name as an A instead of an O, which she found afterwards, so that's the only correction. Otherwise, I'm seeking approval of the July 16, 2013 special meeting minutes with correction.
I'll support.
We have a move to say support. All those in favor?
Aye.
She is carried. And we all took home ordinance 24, and hopefully read it and looked over everything so we can get a general idea. Made notes along the sides. And so, part of what question I see was on section two. We had, right, what I had underlined was township board will consider recommendations from township fire members. That was something we were, that was, we were for or against. I underlined it and it put a note as to which direction on that.
I just put down by your committee rather than by your members.
Okay.
It was supposed to be changed to, but...
Well, I have a thing on the fire committee. One thing, we can create committees, but what we need to do is, they need to be freestanding committees, and they need to be, we need to create a policy, because they really need to be, they're an advisory committee. It needs to have parameters of how long it's going to be, what their job or purpose is. All that needs to be spelled out, so I don't believe it needs to be in this.
But you can set that up in your bylaws. You're not going to have to...
But I don't think it needs to be in the ordinance. It needs to be, I mean, we need to set up, but there should be just a general policy of advisory committees and what they're, how they need to be created, not in the bylaws of the committee. Then you create more bylaws for a committee itself. But this is for advisory committees that are, committees that are, work under the direction of the board.
I personally think it should be left in there, but that's my opinion.
Well, another reason I'm thinking to leave it in there is so that if there is a committee formed, that it's already in there, we don't have to go back and change ordinance 24 again.
We don't have to change ordinance 24. A committee is separate. It's a committee that's created by the board with a purpose and answers to the board. This isn't, that's not exactly what they're saying. This is saying, I'm not sure exactly what their meaning was when they created this, the Township Board will consider recommendations from Township Fire Members. Obviously, that's referring to the fire personnel. So, I'm not sure if that's standing there, but I believe the committees should be, any committees we create need to be separate and need to have, there should be a policy that gives direction on what committees are and how they should be created.
See, if we use the word committees, we're talking about buying a new truck.
Correct.
That committee could come to us with a report through this.
They, no, that's not the same as a fire committee. They created a committee internally that's gathering the information.
But we can still use that.
It's gonna bring, we're gonna get the information, we'll be coming to the board regarding the decision on the truck. But that is a committee that's created in the fire department for their purpose. Because otherwise, we're back to, we're micro-managing the fire department instead of managing it, and we're still going to have the information coming to us. They need to do their part, then it needs to come to us with, and whatever the board decides at that point.
Six years from now, if none of us are up here, nobody will maybe think about a committee or a report from the fire department. That's why I think it should be left in.
Well, but see, like that's...
We're not asking for a report. We're leaving it open to have that committee, whatever it might be.
The thing with the committee, though, is you create it for a purpose, a defined purpose, right? So, and you want the information to come back.
The purpose is sort of better than the fire department.
Well, then, you're talking about the Township Board will consider recommendations from the Township Fire Members. There would be...
Or we can use the word committees more than one.
But that's, you're talking about internal committees that they're creating for their purpose, but that would be going, it still would be coming the same direction from the fire department to the board. Is that what you're, is that what you're saying? Whatever committees they create internally.
They still need to report to us if necessary.
But it would be through...
We could call them for...
But it would be through the fire department, or that's where we would create the other policy that would, we have the right to create the committees and for whatever purpose we want. But yeah, so you're thinking the verbiage is in that last line, just the last line. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
So, instead of...
We're hanging on that detail.
Yeah, no, no, he's talking about, instead of it saying Township Fire Members, it would be Fire Department committees, because you're talking about internal committees in the fire department. Because what I want to do ultimately is take whatever we come up with, type it up, and that's what's going to go to the board before it goes to the public, same way we do it in the past, because it needs to be verified. Hang on, make notes. Let it, let... Yeah, let us go through unless there's, because I know I've got a couple things I had to have you define for me.
Okay, so we're going to change that, the fire department committees?
Instead of fire?
Instead of fire members.
Correct.
Now, that's meaning that they're going to form a committee by the end.
They form a committee. I see too, we had, we had clerical errors too, that on section two, where it says Fire Department. I think when I retype it, I'm just going to clear up. Instead of being a semicolon, it should be a colon. I'll clear those up. We'll have the original look back on.
Well, this is written on this pre-computer days, so...
Yeah, it's gotta be...
Somebody typed it out.
Well, we can, yeah, we can get it in there in the right format, but once we get in there, it'll be easier to get right. And B, we had two C chief review, so that was adding the fact that we need to, because we had it under... I say add two, my note says add two C, chief review, because we have establishment.
You're going to add two C to the number two?
Well, I'm wondering why we, why I put it there.
I didn't have it there.
What did you have it?
I had okay on that one.
I had it under H in...
It should have been HC. Or we were going to add, we were going to add to the fact that it didn't have anything in there. Okay, so that, you had what, what did you have it under?
I had it under three H.
Which is where the review?
Chief reviews, reviewed by the board.
I did have a question on section three, where it said engineers, drivers. As Larry said, engineers is under the information from the fire board authority, whatever their manual is they use. So, instead of saying engineers, engineers slash operators, instead of saying drivers?
So, but isn't a lieutenant an engineer, or a captain an engineer?
I'm not, there, you mean anyone being an engineer?
Right, but I think what we were, we were concerned about was the wording of it, where it says by appointment of an assistant chief, captains, lieutenants, engineers. And I think the engineers fall under like captains or lieutenants, is what we were, I think that's what it is.
And you need to... And you need to drive right on it.
Right, that word driver is what I guess is really throwing everything.
That's what I had to take out.
And in the, in the A...
Because then you brought engineers and firefighters, so you've got everybody that's covered.
Okay, so just take out drivers then?
Yes, and where it says assistant chief, I should say assistant slash deputy chief. We have a deputy. Okay. Of a deputy chief or assistant chief, that's an A. Up in A, because we have...
It's also in B.
In B, I mean, I'm sorry, I apologize, that's in B. In A, because I did ask, Larry did review this too, because on this A part, where it says chief's duties, three A, it says we have to be inclined with state laws and township. It should say federal also, not just state.
So, federal state and township?
Yep. We need to add.
Federal and state laws and township ordinances and policies, is that right?
Yes. And in D, I did talk to Larry about that, and he also said that...
It's not a mandatory recommendation.
If you look up at E, also three E, you'll notice that it says in there, as needed, the chiefs shall notify the township supervisor of major problems. That could be changed to the board, because you don't always have, so the way that D reads, there, every little thing, it doesn't differentiate regarding all personnel. And so, say something comes up, it's handled, it's not a major issue versus E, which says, we need to do, to notify. But if, that could be changed to say, instead of it being in D, remove that part altogether and then, and make it the Township Board, perhaps through the supervisor, but the Township Board be notified? Actually, it should be through the supervisor, then you have a point of contact.
Right, and then a written report should be filed annually?
We should add that into the E section.
Okay, so we only will get, we will only find out about problems that require board action, is what you're saying?
Or more major ones, because a lot of times, like I said, if you have minor conflicts, they aren't, don't amount to anything, but...
But who's going to say what is minor and what's not?
Right, and that's where, I guess we could come up with more defined, I don't know. Don, you're thinking too?
Yeah, I don't know what to do.
I would say that anybody, any firefighter that is given a disciplinary action, we should know about.
Okay, so in here, you're saying in D?
Yes.
In D. So, you're going to...
So, monthly, any firefighter that is given a disciplinary action, we should get a report on.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
And it should be written, given to the clerk.
It needs to be written.
The clerk doesn't get most of them.
Well, actually, it's going to come to the board, but you need a point of contact, so...
But if something's put in the personnel file, we don't have to know that.
Then that's what, that's what, there's a difference between getting notified that there's a disciplinary action and getting a copy of the disciplinary action. That's what you're saying. The clerk, yes, the clerk should get a copy of that for the personnel file. But what we need to get at that point is notification of that to the board.
So, what would we say? The chief shall review all personnel and operating problems, and any dis, well, I actually should say, any disciplinary action, there should be a report monthly.
Right, or a major, you know.
And it does say filed with the clerk's office.
Well, no, that's two different things, Lyle. What you're talking about, yes, a copy of anything that goes in the personnel files needs to be filed. This would not be the same thing. We're not going to give a copy of everything that goes in that file. What we need is notification of what, that there's disciplinary action taken. Sure, it would be still written. It'd be a written report of some form. It'd be written.
If it's written, it should be with, on file.
It would be...
If it's a personnel issue, it should be in that person's personnel file.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but that's two different things. That's what the clerk needs to keep of the personnel records. What, are you saying that everything that happens, the Township Board should get a copy of?
Only if it's written up in the personnel file.
You want an actual copy of anything that goes in there, or just a report of...
I'm not asking for a copy. The clerk needs the copy.
I understand, so this is two different things. You're right, the clerk needs to keep a copy of the personnel records. This is just a report that goes to the board saying disciplinary action was taken verbal, written, a written number two, whatever, and it would state who, but we, it wouldn't be the actual thing that goes in the clerk's file.
Right.
Okay, so we're on the same page. My thought, and you guys can disagree, because what you're talking about goes to the clerk, is it should go, it needs to go to the Township Board. Larry needs a contact person, I say through the Township Supervisor. It's distributed to the board.
That's fine.
So, we need to have that verbiage in there.
Any kind of record that I think should be made aware to board members, but then some of them should be set into the file. Now, these are not things that are supposed to be put to the public and us to public. Know something about them and ask about them.
Well, right, but that's where I'm saying, those are two different things.
What I'm, yeah, what I'm looking at here is, I don't want, I wouldn't want to hear something and then somebody else going to us and tell us that it's happening.
I think what you're saying, Lyle's right about the personnel files needing to be here. Lisa has to have a copy. That's one thing. This is just a report saying if action has been taken, not, not the actual piece of paper, just a, just a report. And we need to, I will actually, just to make sure that what we're doing is right, I'll double check with Doug and with MTA, because that's a good question, what Don said. So then, E stays?
Yeah, that's written.
I would say township, we were going to add Township Board through the supervisor. Okay.
And that can be one of those reports that we just get, like all the other reports that we just get in our mailbox.
Correct. Yep, it would be a report that, that goes to the board. E F G?
The monetary parts circulate.
Yeah. You're talking about the, the...
Thousand dollars.
Thousand dollars. That's what, I don't think it was the thousand dollars. The purchase that exceed a thousand dollars shall conform to township policy. The only township policy I know is one where we have to take bids, and I think the amount was like $20,000. So, the thousand dollars, is that inappropriate? Because, no, I mean, we were thinking too, in this day and age, purchases that exceed $1,000 shall conform to township policy regarding, quote, and competitive bidding. Actually, that's probably not a bad number, I guess. I know Larry might have something to say about that.
So, what else do we circle?
In that part...
Policy is what I circle.
Because the question was about a policy, so we need to just locate whatever policy. That's the only one I'm aware of.
And it's got to conform to the township policy.
Yeah, correct. That should, that's, okay, we just got to make sure we have a policy regarding that, right? But I mean, that would make sense that it has to. And then we had, we had, this is where three H is what you were talking about. The yearly exam, I did ask Larry about this, and he says, actually, the who does which review is spelled out in S O G regarding that. But what we didn't have in there was the Township Board doing a review of the fire chief. So, we need to add that. And that was the area you were thinking of, right? I also asked him, because I wanted to know what, what, what their review looked like, the evaluation thing. That's in S O Gs too. I didn't have time to double check. Well, we need to have one that's uniform.
And then, then there is an annual review of all firefighters, then, by the chief?
It's not by the chief, spelled out in S O Gs. It's, it's different, there are different levels that do them. My only question would be, does the chief review those altogether? And I didn't ask him that part, so we'll have to ask him.
So, did we have that under here?
We had that written in.
Where did we have that?
You see, my problem, Melanie, the hundred and some pages of guidelines, that's all they are. Doesn't mean they have to follow them. It's just something that they should follow.
Right.
It's a directive, but it doesn't mean they have to. I think we have to insist that the chief evaluate people and reevaluate them for him.
Well, we, it does say he's responsible for, so he's responsible to make sure it happens, right? Ensure that all personnel are trained, ensure that fire inspections are done, ensure that equipment, ensure that all department personnel comply. The very first H, it says the chief shall be responsible for the following.
Right, where does it say the annual review at?
Well, that's what I'm asking, where's the, we have to, we have to add firefighters.
On number six, we put, at least I did at the other meeting, and review annually.
Firefighters and chief.
Firefighters and the chief.
But I'm not saying who, I'm just saying the chief review, we have to say shall be done by the board, because the other ones, the chief's still responsible for. When we put it under H.
Yeah, whether we put number seven, that the chief was responsible for an annual review of firefighters.
And eight, we would put in there just because we need to, should be in the same place, but it would be the board responsible. Correct, yes.
Okay, so repeat seven and repeat eight for me.
Seven is going to be a annual review of all firefighters. And eight was an annual review of the fire chief performed by the Township Board.
Whose responsibility is that? The supervisor, or is it...
The review?
The staff, or...
Yeah, I don't know. I put it under the chief.
Right.
I don't know if that's...
Maybe that's, okay, maybe that's why I put it over here. I bet you that's why I put it over here in two C, to create the chief review. So, instead of that being eight, under H, it's going to be two C, and it's going to be the chief review shall be performed by the Township Board.
That would be fine.
An annual review.
Yeah, there you go.
That was probably why I put that in.
Yeah, because it doesn't sound right to be under responsible.
Okay, so there's only seven through. Okay. And, can we do four A? Four A, the same thing, we had engineers in there, that kind of got explained. Then we have the same thing, where it says the assistant chief, say slash deputy chief. We were looking at kind of background checks in five. A, we already know they do a criminal, criminal one and a driving check. Am I correct, Larry? Criminal, criminal driving are right now being done.
I've written in background check, but I don't know what...
Right, we wanted to know if, if what we were doing was thorough enough, or if it needed to be more thorough. And then I, I had two notes, one, I'm creating a policy regarding this physician, making that more clear. And we were going to find out, it just says, we're going to have background check, but what we need to do is find out if we're going to need to add more or spell it out. And that could be created by a policy, because if that changes as time goes on, what we're requiring, say we're, say we require just the two, and all of a sudden, we decide we want to, oh, that's not thorough enough, we want to make it more strict, we want to be able to say through that policy, instead of having to go all the way back through this, that we now require this and this and this, in addition.
I've got written level, background check level, what was that written?
Because we were trying to determine, there's different levels of background checks, apparently.
Lisa was telling us that.
And being not aware of all that information, we definitely don't want to tie our hands in this and when we can create a policy that says, here's what's required, here is the elements. Because right now, we don't, we just do basic, I believe, the background check and the criminal and the driving. There's a lot more that can be done in the background check.
Do we want that done, or don't we want?
No, I think we need to, I think we need to add in there that we're, that we're, we're going to add additional, that a background check and, because a criminal background check and a driving check. What we want to do, though, is create something that can be spelled out more thorough as we find out what we need. Like I said, say we're not needing what we need. We don't want to tie our hands by saying we want this kind of check and this kind of check, when we can just say a broad term, a background check, and then create something that can make it really thorough or semi-thorough, or...
So, right now, we're worried about, say, the driving record and some of those things, but what we also need to worry about is maybe a drug check, alcohol check.
We don't, some of that stuff you can't do by law. I'm not sure which ones, but the criminal, right now, we do a criminal background check and a driving, uh, driving check. But I think they're pretty basic, so what we should do is put those verbiage in here, just as a basic, but then expound on it in a policy, because we, we might not be doing ourselves as ever as by, we might not be doing it there on a job right now. But we definitely want to have the leadway in there to make it more strict.
This is a little...
Or could say according to policy.
So, then we have to make a policy.
We definitely want to make a policy, because we definitely want something that's living, that we can adjust without this process. In case we do, don't make it strict enough. We, we might find out as we go along, we're, we're missing things that we definitely should be checking on.
Is that in the guidelines, off the background check?
Is that in that, sure. Is that in that? Sure. We read those, it's, it's in there, but we'll see how thorough. Now I have. Yeah.
I had underlined physicians examination and then put where. Do we need to say a specific kind of examination? I mean, do they need a back x-ray?
That is in there, that is in the SOG. I remember reading that one. So, and it's by a physician of the township board's choice. At this point, I don't believe the township board's ever decided you're only going to deal with this doctor. I think it's, I think it's a place instead of a, instead of a physician, it's not a physician.
Okay.
It's a place that they have to go to, it's whatever, what, what's it called?
OSHA physical.
Thank you.
OSHA physical.
Okay, OSHA physical.
So does that need changed? I mean. Or should it say?
Should we say an OSHA physical?
If we specify that in there, then that clears everything.
Yeah, but what if the company changes its name?
But if it's just an OSHA physical, it wouldn't matter where, wherever we can get it done.
Is it called an OSHA physical?
Yes.
Okay, so instead of physician, you should say, good driving record and shall be screened and shall, I shouldn't say be screened, it should, and shall be required to.
To perform an OSHA.
Well, to, is it perform or? Required to.
I don't know what other word to use.
And shall be required to obtain an OSHA physical.
Obtain is the word we were looking for. Okay, so we'll take that section out. That makes more sense. I should say and OSHA. Yeah.
B, we wrote clear on, right?
I had six months underlined. If that, is that the correct amount of time? All firefighters shall serve an initial probationary period for a period of not less than six months.
I didn't have anything on that.
So that must have been just something I.
Probably something we talked about.
Or something I, when I read it.
I believe the guidelines said six months.
Something in there. Six.
I wish I had a photographic one.
I did too, because I've read it, but it was quite a while ago when I read it last. Six, we were referring to, oh, we were referring to the, this, including this and not as. Six A was, six A and B were okay, correct? Except for five.
We, yeah, we decided to make it a clarification.
And the definition of wantonness, because I asked Larry that, what is?
I put the word delete for that.
Is intent? Is it, it's the degree of intent? Because we were talking about the fact that it's.
I like that better.
Than wantonness? That's an old word, so I'm putting intent in there. And then I have a reference to, for 6C, I have the reference to attached, which was the other information we had written up for 6C.
What did you do?
I had attached, what we had, the introduction of what we had before, the two-page.
Hold that.
Yeah.
I just, I had for 6C, I changed, you know, the action of the township board shall be at a board meeting, not a public hearing. And the employee involved shall be provided a written copy of the disciplinary action and the factual basis and support of the action. The employee shall respond in writing, not orally. Can we put or orally?
Right, but we, then we went through the section C because it was spelled out in that additional part, except for the part where it says, the chief and any other individuals, the township supervisor believes may be relevant, have relevant information, that part would be.
They would change it.
That part would be crossed out.
The chief could have to be in there and the attorney.
No, it just would be only the township board, the individual appealing, it should say, and the individual appealing may attend the closed session. That's what we left it at, and then I had the rest of this.
I thought we said the attorney could be in there.
Nope, the attorney can't, because that's their right to go to court. We left out, we, this isn't court, this is just leaving it to the board and the individual. So I, mine just referred to this page. Or this, yeah.
Okay, read that again, will you, only the township board.
Only the township board and the individual appealing may attend the closed session. So the chief and any other individual, the township supervisor believes may have relevant information is crossed out.
Right.
Because I think we were starting to review that. And then we went to the section, we did that last.
But we did decide in 6C that we didn't want it done orally, we wanted it in writing and they could talk in the closed session, but we wanted it in writing.
Which is covered in this one.
It is.
Yep. And maybe if who shall, per, deny, or modify. Appeal must be in writing, delivered to the township clerk somewhere in 30 calendar days after disciplinary action. Such an appeal must contain the filing information. And then they have a right for the closed session.
Okay, but do we have to change this in ordinance to?
We would take this 6C out and insert this in. We wouldn't, this wouldn't be its own ordinance.
All right, okay.
Because it covers.
I see what you're saying, no, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Sometimes it takes me a while.
No, I'm, I'm with you. We've looked at it so many times, sometimes I don't know if we see it.
But now when we add that in, we don't add some of this other stuff line here? We don't add this?
No, no, none of that would be on there, that upper part, it would be, none of the title, none of this stuff. It would just be.
That was the question I had last time.
Yeah, it would be, it would be as here, just to see, yeah. So it starts out, actually, none of this part would be there, none of this upper part. Okay. I think it'll be much better after we get through today and we have a copy that shows it, then we can read it and say, are you A and A?
Oh, that was just C, right?
Correct. And then we went to.
Firefighter circled under E, but I just.
We decided to put fire personnel.
Fire personnel instead of firefighters.
Exactly.
Yeah, fire, fire department personnel, fire personnel. And we had a question on medical marijuana. And that should be under the SOGs, under controlled substances. Because that was one.
What happens when that becomes a law that is legal?
Marijuana is legal. But it's still a controlled substance and there is regulations regarding how you can operate under controlled substances or alcohol in the SOG, so that's covered.
So there's no way a particular firefighter could try and get around that? Because it is still.
And if they're in any accident or anything, when they go in, they get blood tested for alcohol and drugs. They do whatever, they're in an accident, they have to go in right away. I, I am not sure what the hour, it is, yes, they get taken, they have to give, they, they have to give blood.
You mean a personal accident?
No, I'm talking about when they're on duty. When they're on duty. Not if they're personal, we don't have any control over that. Okay, we changed, we were changing in section seven. We were changing that quarterly to monthly.
Correct.
Because that's the way everybody's paid now. In section eight. Okay, that was the question of fires in other area, we were going to put in.
In our jurisdiction.
Wording that it's in our jurisdiction. And that was going to go, that wording was going to go right after the word emergencies, I believe. Regarding Lake Township jurisdiction.
I think you're correct.
Okay.
I think you're correct.
And section nine, emergency responses.
Nine is where we had all kinds of comments.
We did.
Weren't we just going to remove that?
That's what I had. Emergency responses, because it was covered, when responding to emergencies, all personnel will drive, cooperate conservatively to public and defense of driving. Decent emergency signals on vehicles shall be considered in a request for the right of way from other drivers. I think we were, because it was a given. Am I incorrect? It was in the SOGs, pardon?
We're in, we're in the emergency response.
Were we, I, I believe that the information is in the SOG is what I had. I could be staking on that one too, but I think that it doesn't need to be gotten rid of. I mean, it's, it's a statement of, it doesn't seem to be an untrue statement. So what notes do you have?
I just, I don't know, I put BD, remove, I have no idea what BD stands for.
Bob Tom Bush.
Oh, there it is, okay.
I'm not sure why we removed it though, so.
It's already covered in your SOGs.
Yeah, it is covered in SOGs.
But aren't the SOGs under this?
Yes, they are.
So.
So it wouldn't hurt, I mean.
It wouldn't hurt to have it in here.
It wouldn't hurt to have it in, I mean, it's a response that's.
Actually, section seven was the same thing. Section seven was in conflict with 5C and that was by BD also.
Well, we do determine it during the budget cycle. We got to keep accurate records. So I don't see the point in removing it. It's same with section nine.
Right, because section 5C talks about probationary firefighters. This talks about all.
Okay, probationary firefighters shall be. Well, actually, their compensation at the probationary level, I believe, is less than our budget.
I think you're right.
Than a probationary firefighter. So was it removing C? Because that's covered under, you're talking about 5C, you're correct. Or just that portion?
I don't know, it just, it tells you more in 5C, it's about probationary firefighter.
Right.
I mean, it gives you more than just the compensation. It also talks about the insignia or badges and use of emergency signal devices.
So it should be, it should just say, a probationary firefighter shall be entitled to compensation, because they are.
And that's what it says.
But it says, but not benefits afforded to a permanent firefighter.
Correct.
So, so just leave it to, entitled to compensation. And cross, and the rest would be removed. And say, and shall be restricted to perform only those duties for which he and she, instead of but, say, and. Are you on the same one down 5C?
I, I don't know. Because a probationary doesn't get the same amount, like you said, right?
But, but they're still entitled to compensation. So a probationary officer, firefighter, excuse me, probationary firefighter shall be entitled to compensation. They're, they're entitled to compensation. And shall be restricted to perform and the rest of it stays the same.
Do they give the benefits also as a probationary firefighter?
Not afforded to the permanent firefighter.
Right.
Because I think, what's the benefit that is the licensure policy and stuff? And I believe you have to be a fighter, fight firefighter too. But so the compensation, but the rest of it would be. Okay.
What benefits do they get? What are we talking about?
Firefighters get the insurance.
Did that say?
Do the probationary get the, do the probationary, so, so it would be.
So I think it's all the same.
So other than, but it's not the same as, so it could be, a probationary firefighter shall be entitled to compensation and benefits.
Right.
But not the same as.
But shall be restricted to perform only those duties for which he or she has been specifically.
Okay, so you're saying leave that.
That's the way I'm seeing it.
Because they're restricted on the fighting and the fire.
And benefits, yep. So just leave afforded to permanent firefighter out of there.
Yeah, I think so. I don't know, what does everybody else think?
That sounds, that sounds reasonable, Dan.
And, okay, on section seven, for compensation. It's at the last sentence in there, it says, the time records shall be submitted monthly to the township board for payment. Shouldn't it be township clerk?
Yes, thank you, absolutely. Don't you like how you read these again and then things pop out? Does that bring us to 10? And I didn't see any questions on 10 or 11. I did have 11 or 12C circled.
Yep. We said to take out the name of the Blue Lake Township Firefighters Association.
Correct, because that would conflict with what exists currently. So the personnel of the fire department tries to incorporate tax exempt charitable organization. We were going to just remove the name, right? That's all I had crossed out.
So just put a period after organization.
After, yeah. Yep.
And I would say rather than the purpose of the association, it should be the purpose of the organization. Keeping with what was said.
Association.
Huh?
Might have been association.
Right, right. The only reason where they put an association was because they had the Blue Lake Township Firefighters Association.
Yep, you're right. Yep. And that was all. Doesn't have any other?
And then organization again. The group's association.
On the next page or?
No, it's at the left, very bottom of C, page seven.
Oh, yes.
And then they have it at the top of the next page too.
Yeah, I'm just replacing, instead of association, organization. Yep.
And again, wherever there's association, just put organization.
Okay, that makes sense.
We have to go back to section four, officers. We can add chaplain in there.
Whoops.
The chaplain is not an officer, but. He did it such, I don't know the right word.
No, he's not an officer.
He's not a commanding officer.
He's not an officer, so chaplain would be included.
There shall be chain of command. This is the chain of command.
That position's not in here in either, so that's what we have.
No, it's in the SOGs. Should we, we just need to refer to the SOGs? Because what happens later on, if you, you create, you grow and you create, now you have two lieutenants and two captains and, and you have. Now you have two lieutenants and two captains, and you have this lieutenant's got lieutenant of... We do have. We have more than one.
So we don't want the law that we have a chaplain, it's just an option that...
I would think so. And it's in the SOGs as a flow chart, but that wouldn't be in the command structure of chaplain.
I think we're just lucky that we have them.
Yeah. But it shouldn't, but it's not in the command.
But it wouldn't be in the chain of command. Okay. Says all right to you, Don? You okay with that?
Just along with the common board, that's...
Yep, just common board with the description in the SOGs.
And the chaplain is not an officer, that's the part that I...
Right. So is that listed under offices?
You good with that? All right, did the board have any more questions? Like I said, what I want to do is, when we get done with this, type it up and give it to you in a clean form, so we can look at it as a board. And then before we, as introduction, before it's, you know, for the literal public and prior to adoption. Because it's hard to read it like this.
I'd like to see it as futile, because the public was here, they just...
We're gonna, we're gonna.
They want to readjust it in here.
We're gonna, but what I want to do is see if we're okay with where we're at right now. I feel good about where we're at. Okay. All right. Done?
I'm okay with this. But I think we should go through, go ahead and finish up our job here. This is an open meeting.
Right, it's going to be public comment.
Okay.
But that's what I'm saying, this is not... This doesn't have to be typed up in a clean form.
What I'm saying is that, once this is done, it's done.
Right, because remember, this isn't... This is where we're working on it. Then the board looks at what we've created, then it goes out for a month review, for the public to review. So this is actually what we're presenting. But there's public comment. I just want to make sure we're okay with where we're at right now. Don is... Debbie. I am. Well, okay. All right, then we'll move to public comment.
Well, didn't you say you had a couple of questions to Larry first?
Right, because I think Larry had a... Some of it, he answered for me, if you would please step up. Part of it's grammatical. There's grammar errors in here. That can be cleared up.
First of all, addressing the chaplain issue, the chaplain is a staff officer, not a line officer. Line officers are the ones who will run an incident. Okay, the chaplain is part of the... It's known as the command staff. Okay, in your organizational structure, you see that it comes between the chief and the deputy chief. It's part of the command staff, and it's a staff officer position. So in a sense, the chaplain's an officer, in a sense, it's not.
Yeah, he is, but he's not. I understand it as he's not an officer and a commander.
He's not a line officer.
He's not an officer in the command structure itself, which is chief, deputy chief.
He's a staff officer in the command structure. There are two groups of officers, line and staff. Staff are clerical positions. Okay, think of it as that. Line are firefighter positions. The chaplain is a staff officer.
Well, then he better be put in the 424.
That's not a bad idea, especially, I know my goal, and I hope it's going to be the goal in the future of any chief, is to have a chaplain. You know, we're not guaranteed a chaplain for it. You know, we're very lucky right now. I always think ahead, well, what if, what if Pastor Pycraft leaves? Okay, then what's going to happen here? Well, I have something in mind already. The point is, we're going to try to keep chaplain on board, and the chaplain will always be a staff officer position. The chaplain may not always be a firefighter. Okay? You know, our chaplain is still a firefighter. So that's what separates him from the other officers. In the whole group, he's an officer, but he's a staff officer. Does that mean he can't run a scene? No, because even our firefighter, senior firefighter, if there's no officer on the scene, initially runs the scene.
Right, they establish command.
So chaplain is still a firefighter. Can he become a lieutenant someday if he wants to? Yep. He can become any officer rank, I hope, as provided he's qualified for that rank.
Well, and it's because he has gone to training to become a firefighter. So a regular, just a regular chaplain would not be able to do that. You have to be able to go up in ranks, just like anybody else. But because our chaplain has decided he wants to be a firefighter, then he is going... Okay, I understood.
A chaplain? You know, the person I have in mind, you know, again, we always... I always project, okay? The person I would have in mind is not a firefighter. Would they want to be a chaplain? I don't know. Okay? I'm not worried about that yet. Hopefully, I don't have to worry about it, but that's what would happen. So the chaplain would still follow... The chaplain, non-firefighter, would still follow the same job description and qualifications that our present chaplain has. Okay?
So a staff officer is ahead of lieutenants and captains?
No, no. A staff officer is a clerical position. A public information officer is a staff officer for that moment. We don't have a designated public information officer. He's only a... In the officer ranks, but only as a staff, as a clerical person, an administrative person.
4A is referenced specifically to a chain of command. So he would not be in the chain of command per se.
I would not include him in the chain.
He would not go from chief to chaplain to deputy chief. He should not be in the chain of command, so it shouldn't be in there.
Correct.
That's the way I understood it, so.
The next item, five, a lot kind of work at that, which is here, 5A. My suggested wording on that is applicants must successfully pass an OSHA physical...
Excuse me, Larry.
5A.
Required to obtain, you said, instead of saying obtain, successfully pass.
Okay, my suggested wording is applicants must successfully pass an OSHA physical at a location of the township board's choice and at the township expense. Right now, we go to Hackley Health, okay, Hackley Workplace. And we may choose someday to go somewhere else depending on cost. So I think in the, in your ordinance, it should be set at the board's choice. That would be my recommendation there.
You think that should be in there, because then the board can... Because I know we weren't going there before, so obviously, there's been a change at some point.
I don't know where you were going before, but, you know, yep. But that allows for you people to make the decision.
I think it was a different name, because they changed their name.
Yeah, I know what you mean, and it was the one over here on Colby, and they have never been set up for a complete OSHA physical.
It's only said OSHA physical.
As a matter of fact, they're closed now.
I'm looking at this again. Applicants for vacant firefighters' positions shall be of good character, possess a good driving record, and shall be able to pass...
And shall successfully pass.
Yeah, I have "shall successfully pass."
An OSHA physical and so on.
And shall successfully pass, yeah. That makes, that's better wording.
And by the way, the top line there, I would keep that singular firefighter positions, you already have positions. So I would call that firefighter positions, just to...
Oh, yeah, that's grammatical.
Going down to, let's see, continuing with 5A. The terminology is criminal background check. This is what we do.
Right.
And it's in our SOGs, the forensics of the SOG in the appendix section. It's called a criminal background check.
Right, so it's already required.
Yeah, and a driving record check.
Those are what you do now.
Those are what we do now. And I personally don't see where you need to expand into other types of checks, but I mean, if you wanted to, that's fine. But I think that covers, that covers it. And it's worked before.
I know, still got to look at it.
The drug and alcohol checks are done in the OSHA physical, because blood work is done in there. So there's your drug and alcohol check.
That's the initial.
Pardon me?
That's your initial check.
That's the initial check, yep. And we... My goal, my short-term, well, let's put medium-term goal, is to have annual physicals. Right now, we have annual medical evaluations. They are not complete physicals.
So that would be covered under here?
At this time, we can't even afford it, but it's the medical... There are about three things that you talked about today, including driving, and I suggest you keep the driving portion in there that's in there now, that you're going to be getting in the next set of SOGs, hopefully in a day or two. I'm waiting for one page.
But the SOGs have to meet what the ordinance is?
The ordinance.
Well, they clarify or they expound upon the ordinance, but the ordinance has to, it has to meet, you're right, or expound upon it.
And in the next section you'll be getting, it's called internal operations. Remember, the board decided to ask to do this in sections? So it's internal operations, it'll cover driving in a lot of detail. It'll cover the, what were we talking about here? The drug and alcohol? The driving, if you get an accident, okay? Covers that. And that, by the way, that's already set up through Mercy Health, well, Hackley Workplace. It's already set up 24 hours a day. We just go to a different location if it happens to be a night. During the day, we go there, we say, we would like this person to have our blood alcohol and controlled substances checked, and that's all we have to say.
But you're talking about what you're creating. What we're working on right now is just what's in the ordinance.
Right, I'm just showing you that this is covered.
Right, the SOG's cover.
Because you did have a concern with the medical marijuana, that's covered. Matter of fact, medical marijuana, when a person's prescribed that, their last dose, they have to wait 30 days after their last dose in order to have their blood checked, because the one chemical in there stays, can last for up to 30 days. If it's still present in their blood, you're still on medical leave.
So they have to be released because of that?
Based on that, yeah. So we got that done.
That's good.
The terminology, and I know I'm kind of jumping around here, engineer driver, to answer your question, Debbie, all of us, well, first of all, in a full-time department, engineer is a separate rank, okay? On our department, everybody has to be an engineer. We all have to be trained to operate the trucks, whether we want to or not. So that term is not wrong to use for us, okay? Even though it's not a rank for us. And the reason for having driver in there is because all our trucks don't have pumps. Engineer is a term that people use for the driver of the engine, of the tanker. To drive a van out there, that's driver, okay? Not really engineer, because there's something operating on there. So that's why the dash is in there, okay? Engineer slash driver. So if you still have any questions, as I'm explaining this, just stop.
So in our fire department, we, like a lieutenant may be an engineer, like you said, or the captain would be an engineer. We don't have a specific engineer.
Correct, we don't have it as a rank, correct. It's just the time that we call them, because they've been trained to run the pumps. We have a recruit right now who is not, well, he's not, I shouldn't say recruit, he's probationary yet. He, it's going to take him a while before he can be considered an engineer, because he hasn't done anything on the trucks, except maybe drive 20 miles on one truck, and that's about it, okay? They have to go through their practical driving test, and they have to go through the truck test before they're... The truck test especially, before they're considered an engineer on our 1420, for example, okay? Most of our probationary firefighters drive things like these right away, because there's not really any testing on that. They do have to have, they do have to walk so many miles before they're okay to do that, okay? I have to sign off on their state prac, which is just a check mark in a box on the, on their record. And I'm not going to do that until they have driven so many miles, including in the snow. So we have two different categories. X number of miles D for dry weather, X number of miles S for snowy weather, snow or ice. So does that clarify engineer driver? Our personnel file, anything that I put in firefighters' personnel files already automatically get, a copy is automatically given to Lisa. So I mean, that's fine that you have it in there, it's already being done, just so you would like that. And then... On the written quotes, I would actually prefer that you leave it at 1,000 instead of raising it.
We are leaving it at 1,000. We are leaving it at 1,000. I just said, we have to check on the policy, we're direct into a policy.
Good, okay. Yeah, I like that. And it doesn't say in here if this still requires board approval. In other words, if I, if I have something and we got three bids, and the best bid is $1,200. Right now, my interpretation is I have to go through the board and get the approval for that. Is that correct or is it not?
Correct.
Okay, so I prefer you keep that the same, because it's, I think anything over $1,000 should be, there should be more than one estimate or bid, whatever, whether it's a truck or a length of hose. Evaluations, we... Again, it's in our SOGs. Evaluations are done according to the chain of command. A firefighter will be evaluated by lieutenant. The lieutenant will be evaluated by captain. Captain will be evaluated by the deputy chief. Deputy chief will be evaluated by chief. And I'm hoping you guys come up with something to evaluate the chief with. I think there might be something as a basis for you in there already in the SOGs, but, you know, it should be done, so.
Irregardless of who evaluates who in the ranking system, in this, the chief's ultimately responsible, so.
Yes, and that's why, that's part of each rank's job description, yeah. And I have to follow up on that.
We have to add your, the chief's evaluation, which we will be adding.
Right, and I think it's already in there, but again, you may not have a place made note, but that the board will anyway evaluate the chief.
Correct.
Okay, good.
That's going to be added in.
Do the evaluations go to us, or do they just get put in the file?
If they get put in personnel file, the copy goes to the quarter. Anything that gets put into an officer's or firefighter's personnel file, I automatically make a copy and give it to Lisa. And some things are really minor, but, you know, it's in their file, so.
And the board has the right to review those files. The board is the employer, if you request it.
We can request of the board.
To review the files. The board can, because you're the employer.
There was some talk in the chain of command about assistant chief slash deputy chief. It should be deputy chief first, because it is a higher rank. Deputy chief slash assistant chief is a little...
No, that's the way I put it, actually.
And...
I thought we were just taking assistant right out.
No, where's slash?
Oh, well, I explained to Melanie the other day.
That was my question to him, so he could explain to you, there's difference between a deputy and an assistant.
A deputy chief has a lot more responsibilities. Right now, in our ordinance 24, we don't have a separate rank. Matter of fact, my recommendation would be, forget about the slash, but have chief, deputy chief, assistant chief, no slash, have it as a separate rank. That's my recommendation. But, you know, there's no problem with having it the other way, where, you know, this person has so much more responsibility than they're referred to as deputy chief. Example, with Deputy Chief Bear here, you know, he has a big responsibility in terms of pretty much managing the budget. That is something way beyond what an assistant chief would normally do. That's why I make him deputy chief. Stacia Ripley in Baltimore, she was recently, a year ago, made deputy chief, because her responsibilities have grown since she took over training. So Chief Styles over there made her, raised her up to deputy chief. That's how that works in small departments. The reason for still keeping the rank of assistant chief is because if we ever grow to the point, and again, you know, when I do the SOGs, I'm looking toward the future. If we ever grow to the point where someday we may have firefighters, two lieutenants, two captains, two assistant chiefs. two captains, two assistant chiefs, a deputy chief, and a chief, that's already built in there for that to happen. It won't happen now, but it's gonna be long, we gotta grow quite a bit before that happens, but that's, that's the reasoning behind that. It allows for, for growth in the future, and I think as you, your ordinance should you also, you're, you're keeping your thumb on things with the ordinance, allowing for growth, and I'm also allowing for growth as I do the SOGs. The, I have on E, and this would be three E. Maybe this was your, yeah, I think it is. Add written annual report to this section, I think that's what people are talking about. So it's just something, I have it for my information.
Yeah, but actually, we, we changed what we were going to because we were looking at D and E, and we actually are, are changing D, keeping it in there and leaving E. And changing E to include that she shall notify the township board through the supervisor of major problems. So D and E are staying in there separate, but we did change D.
Okay, and like you say, the driving part, where you get the internal operations portion of the SOGs, that is, I think there's about five parts to the driving part. It's probably to recover everything.
But that still needs to be in here, what is in there.
I would recommend you keep what you have in there the way it is, yeah. Any other questions, clarifications?
I think you answered the one I had on explaining the deputy assistant in the marijuana, medical marijuana. Explain that one even more because I didn't know about the 30 days.
Yeah. Again, that's in the SOGs under, under membership. It's in there. I hope you call that section off.
Do you guys have any more questions, Larry, before you?
Sure, I'm on style, Debbie, Lyle.
So far.
Done?
Okay, thanks, Larry. Okay, public, you step up or?
No, I can't.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna just...
Okay.
I think it'll pick it up, I'm not sure.
Okay, I got a couple of questions and then some recommendations. You may have already covered some of this. With regard to, let's see, it's section three, paragraph H, sub-paragraph one. Currently, it says supervise the extinguishment of all fires that endanger the health, safety, and welfare of Blue Lake. I recommend that we supervise, the chief supervises all fire department emergencies. We don't have enough manpower for the active duties of a given emergency for the chief not to assume command, if, even if he arrives late. I think he should be assuming command. We talked about section nine and that being pretty much in the SOGs as it is currently. I believe also section 10 is likewise in the SOGs and should not be part of ordinance 24 at this time. It seemed like I had something else, but I already misplaced it. But I thank you for going through the, the test of this. I think the only thing that can come from this is it get better. And that's my bottom line.
There will be another cleaner version for people to view also, when the public time is, so that might help.
Thank you.
You said you should delete all of section 10?
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10, yeah.
Because they're in the SOGs.
Yep, because I think it's already in the SOGs.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brad?
No one.
I'm waiting for Bob. It's the other Bob.
I was gonna say, don't they always have something to say? Okay, sir, yes, 7:45, Honro. I just have one statement I would like to make. And I hope that you're listening because you talked about the chaplain being a staff Do you realize that all of your subordinate firefighters, whether they're on the scene for an incident, or whether they're just in the fire station itself doing duties or just plain having a talk about what they should do? Officer means officer. And that means when that officer speaks, that is a command according to what has been established for chain of command. You talked about a general firefighter looks at someone and he knows that he is assigned an officer position. It makes no difference to him psychologically whether that officer is staff, clerical, or line of command. It's still an officer. And if he says something, then that person who is a firefighter must obey according to the chain of command, his superior officer. Remember that. Because this could arrive at a problem, and I think it already has on past incidents.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good job.
All right, you wanna, Larry's got something to say?
Employee handbook, you said was in conflict a couple times with ordinance 24. Ordinance 24 is still the law, right?
Correct, and we need to re, we need to go back over, that's another day, employee handbook, we definitely need to review that, because that's from 2004.
So we don't worry about this?
That would be, that would be what is the law, right. Yeah, but we definitely, that, don't lose that, because we gotta do that.
Well, that's what I, there's a lot of things wrong in there.
Yeah, don't lose it. Okay, any, any other thoughts, board? We good for today?
I do think it's a good start to wrap this through like this.
And we're gonna clean up a copy, and I think it, that helps us too, so. All right, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think so.